I can't hear.
Good evening, hopefully everybody out there can hear. So Megan, as you heard, I went online, it's being recorded or streaming live on Facebook. We have enabled closed captioning this evening, so for those of you who want to be able to have that, you just simply need to find on your Zoom bar somewhere, whether it's on top or below, and enable closed captions. Megan, we do have at least one person in the room wants to make a comment. I already see at least one of our attendees has their hand up. So after we do the roll call and we enter into public comment, we'll allow the person in the room to go first and then we'll start to promote attendees to panelists as they raise their hand when they would do comments. So with that, in the room, we have a couple of planning commission members, we have a couple online. I don't see yet, I'm going to look in the room here to see is there, if you maybe want to give it a minute for him to come and join us because I thought he was going to be here in person, but he might be coming in online. So let's give him maybe one more minute when he comes all up for me to panelist, okay?
Yes, he did say he was going to come on in person, but traffic was horrible today.
Did you have power out of just here from the?
No, I'm honest, but the power was out on Holland.
Yeah, we lost it.
Yeah, what happened there?
A truck got lost and was large enough to take overhead wires with it as it went down Holland.
Near Valerie's house, right? Wasn't it near the?
I don't know how far it went, but Valerie was impacted.
Really?
Yep.
Okay.
We were impacted in a way.
There he is. Right on time.
Good evening. Gentlemen.
So Megan, as you can see, I think he's joining us, so we're.
This is George. Good evening.
Hi. Hello. Okay. All right, I think we're all here. So, roll call.
Yeah, so we have online Diane Law.
Here.
Megan Harmon.
Here.
In the room, Kelly.
Here.
Dan Zado. Sorry about pronouncing that wrong. Mike Moynham.
Here.
That's everyone. Well, welcome for our first meeting in quite some time. We thought we'd start off the meeting by looking through, I guess it's the July 14th, 2021 meetings?
We'd like to do the public comment first.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that. So we do have our first group who's interested in speaking and we can have them go first. And then I have in the attendees, there are right now nine attendees, one has their hand up. If you would like to speak, you know, an attendee, put your hand up. I'll promote you to panelist, which will enable you to turn your camera on and speak. Starting with the room, each person who speaks, would you please limit your comments to three minutes? And start by giving us your name and street address. Thank you.
Okay. Can everyone see me? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Lawrence Lepidi. I live in 2027 Hampstead Drive, Churchill. I've been a resident since 1988. I think I know several of you. I served on council for 12 years. So appreciate what you all go through in the voting, your time to the borough and I do appreciate it. What I wanted to speak about is item number five on tonight's agenda. I realize you haven't gotten to it yet, but I'm concerned it's even on the agenda and I'll explain why. I guess made for the record, should I read it? Consider making recommendations, the Churchill Borough Council on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, short-term rentals. And then underneath it says amending the Churchill Borough zoning ordinance to provide a definition for the short-term rental use of a dwelling and to authorize the short-term rental use, and I want to repeat authorize the short-term rental use of a dwelling as a conditional use in residential zoning districts of the borough and to establish criteria and conditions there too. Okay, I realize you haven't discussed this yet, but I'm very concerned it's even under consideration. I live in a residential area. I moved in 1988, it was zoned residential. I think virtually every resident of Churchill, when they bought a home, moved in with the assumption, actually the law, that it was a residence. Change that would be a fundamental change in the nature of the borough and would adversely affect the property rights of residents. We bought homes in dwelling places. Why don't you start allowing any short-term rentals? And all you do is look at Airbnb's website, which is what this is all about. You're turning it into a business which completely destroys the concept of a residential neighborhood. People are going to buy houses, companies are going to buy houses and they're going to rent them out like hotels. And I think we all know the worst case scenario was about a year ago when the city of Pittsburgh had a mass shooting at a party. And I know who maybe ever proposed this was saying let's get ahead of this by putting some controls on. The problem is once you allow it, you lose control over it. And I think we've seen that not only locally, but if you read the newspapers, there's a lot of problems when this happens in residential areas. Pulled up the zoning map, it's online. All five residential districts, R1 through R5, single-family dwelling, public park, accessory use. The only exceptions are municipal building, cemeteries, things that were either grandfathered in or don't affect residential use. All the conditional uses as of now are either multifamily dwellings or things conducive to residential use like churches, community centers. And there is an exception for a golf club, which again was probably grandfathered in and does not affect the residential use of this community. So I realize this is a new item. I appreciate your time on this, but you really have to give some consideration whether this should even be go beyond tonight. So I appreciate your time. I guess I'm probably running short.
Three minutes, three minutes is up.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time. I may not be able to stay, but I'm going to go home and dial in if that's okay.
Yeah, and this is recorded on live on Facebook and we'll put it on YouTube probably tomorrow or the day after.
Okay. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Kathy, I'm going to go ahead and promote you from a attendee to panelist. Please accept the invitation to be promoted. And once you come into panelist, would you please turn on your microphone in your camera if you'd like and address the commission.
Okay. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, let's see, I'm trying to turn on, okay, there we go. Um, let me start my time on my clock. Okay, my name is Kathy Boardner. I live at 1926 Hampstead Drive and I'm also concerned about this short-term rental proposal. And I would, I don't know how to access the actual proposed ordinance that you are considering. So I need to get with Alex on how to do that so that I can speak knowledgeably about things. So I have not read the actual change that you want to make. My question is, what is stopping people right now from having short-term rentals in Churchill? I hope that during tonight's meeting, you will discuss that and explain that. Do we know if there are any short-term rentals in Churchill now? And are you going to require people to register? If they want to do a short-term rental, are they going to be required to register? And again, if I could read the ordinance, if I knew how to access it, I could probably answer that myself. And I also have a comment about the the other item on the agenda, which I think has something to do with cell towers, I'm assuming. I want to make sure that that has nothing to do with allowing something like a facility that I've read about these buildings where they they mine Bitcoin. And basically, all this in the building is just large amounts of computer equipment and they place these in rural areas. And people who live anywhere near them are just, the hum of the buildings drives them nuts. So I want to make sure that the other item that you're looking at would not allow that type of a facility, for example, on the Westinghouse site. And finally, I want to thank Alex for the update or whoever gave it about what, why our electricity was out. Who imagines a large truck getting lost and driving on our wonderful borough roads? Which is apparently what actually happened today. So thank you for letting us know that that was the cause of our electricity being out. And I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thanks Kathy. So Megan, I do not see any other attendees who have put their hands up to be acknowledged. So we'll give it another, another minute here as I place Kathy back into the attendee role. Looks like I got another hand up. Mr. Balki, Ken, I'm going to promote you to panelist. So please accept the invitation to become a panelist and turn on your mic. And you can turn your camera if you like.
Okay, thank you. My name's Ken Balki. I live at 2007 Hampstead Drive. And I've been a resident here in Churchill with my wife Ruth Ann since 1977. I just wanted to say that when I got, when my wife, when Ruth Ann and I got the agenda the other day and saw the short-term rental issue come up, it really raised significant concern to us and for myself. I grew up on the north side, very close to where that mass shooting occurred last year. And that sits in the back of my mind and I know there have been other incidents as well too. And I just wanted to say I support the comments that my neighbor Larry Lepidi provided this evening. As my, I know that as residents, we supported that and also I weighed back the comments that Kathy Boardner just made too. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks Ken. Again, we'll see about allowing for others to raise their hand. Madam Chair, I just would like to note, one of the comments or questions was the availabilities ordinances. The borough posts all of our meeting minutes and agendas and all kinds of other information on ECO 360. I think most people got familiar with that part of our website during the Westinghouse. And both these ordinances and their draft form have been posted there for quite some time, including I think version four of the short-term rental and version 1.2 of the Churchill Borough Wireless. I'll make sure I put some of the right numbers tomorrow when I look at it again. There's also some other draft ordinances that council has been milling around for a while. They're available. So we've had those available for quite some time. And if anyone has questions on how to access those, we can provide that. You know, maybe through a savvy citizen outreach, so people can find those draft ordinances. And I appreciate that comment by Kathy asking where she might go find it. So with that, Madam Chair, the meeting's all yours.
All right, back to approving minutes. As I said, I think the one we have not, the first one we did not approve was July 14th, 2021. Does anybody, assuming everybody reviewed that, we'll do it one at a time. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes from July 14th, 2021?
No, I don't remember the meeting too long. It's a very comprehensive document. I applaud whoever went through and put it together. It was a lot of good info there to reminisce on.
That would be Alex. All right, with that being said, do we have a motion to accept the meetings from minutes from July 14th, 2021?
Same.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, same exercise with the February 2nd, 2022 meeting minutes. They're very complex. You could probably read them real quick. If we have no objections or changes to those, can we have somebody pass? Recommend passing those or that, accepting the minutes, I'm sorry.
Our motion that could be approved, second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, good, good. We're going to start off, I guess, considering a review and recommendations related to the proposed zoning ordinance amendment for the wireless communication facilities 5G. The wireless. If you looked at the ordinance, they are quite extensive. I don't know that we need to go through it page by page. Alex, and I know that we hired outside counsel, the Cohen farm who does nothing but wifi and privacy and cybersecurity issues. Do you want to give us some background on why we retain them and what the ordinance says?
Yes, before I do that, I'll just read that paragraph that's on the agenda and then I'll stop sharing the screen. The proposed zoning ordinance amendment wireless communication facility amendments, the Churchill Borough Code specifically, the addition of part two, chapter 300, wireless communication facilities. It provides definitions, establishes general and specific standards for the location, placement, construction, maintenance of tower-based, non-tower and small wireless communication facilities. It further regulates such facilities within and outside the public rights of way. Establishes specific application in the annual renewal fees and enforcement. I'll stop sharing. So just two things related to items ordered by the planning commission, according to the Miss Pies Planning Code, generally is where zoning ordinances and amendments are drafted. However, in some cases, as is the case with this, ordinances can be drafted by the governing body or else it would be the borough council. Borough Council's Infrastructure Committee drafted both of these ordinances or these drafts that are amending the zoning ordinance. Therefore, the Miss Pies Planning Code requires that the planning commission, as well as the county planning, have a chance to review and comment. The county planning letters have been included in your binder for your review. And what this allows you is an opportunity to comment. And if you like, you may recommend the council approve or you could recommend the council not approve. Or you could recommend the council go back to the drawing board or just simply make comments. It's up to the board's leisure to proceed how they like. After tonight, the council may decide to revise the ordinances and that kind of puts them back in go and they would have to like go back to county planning and come back to do. Or they may proceed by scheduling a public hearing before final adoption. So I just want to give you a little bit of a lay of the land. As was already noted by the chair, Megan, the Cohen Law Group was hired by Borough Council last spring and began working with us as well as many municipalities across the Commonwealth because they kind of have a market on all things related to communications. The FCC, the Federal Communications Commission regulates this world of cell and satellite communications. And they preempt us along with the state regulators from really doing a whole lot at the local government level. In other words, they give us a very small carve-out or a very small area for which we may be able to interact with these on a regulatory basis. We can't stop or keep them out of our community because they're federally allowed as well as the state allows them. But what we can do, we're trying the best we can do. For those of you who are not familiar with these, you may have seen them. They look like, I don't know, some, almost like an elongated air conditioning unit or refrigerator on top of telephone poles or even on traffic lights or on street poles. You'll see them throughout the city and other parts of Allegheny County and some of the suburban counties. They, that's where they tend to be. They're truly small wireless facilities, both in their size and their reach. So the idea is that they would deploy dozens or hundreds of these in a given geography so that they can provide wireless cellular coverage in a maximum way for, you know, customers and for residents and all that.
And they cannot be disallowed.
Correct. If they want to do a new tower, however.
Tower, not as small.
Yeah, if they want to, they want to build a tower and put a bunch of these on.
Yeah.
That we are making that a conditional use in our commercial or our C1 zoning district, the Westinghouse area. But that's not how they're being deployed. Quite frankly, they're being, they're just all the time cropping up. And we're trying to have whatever role we can in regulating this. Again, I think Diane serves on the Committee of Council that worked on this for the better part of last year. And we were really concerned with aesthetics and safety. We did a lot of research related to that, those issues. And I don't know if you want to chime in on any of those items. But I will say this before Diane speaks. The Cohen Law Group wasn't able to be here tonight. You know, they have lots of clients as well and can't pick all the meetings. But we've scheduled a meeting with them and I'm going to have members of the council committee who worked on it be able to know when that meeting is and attend that meeting so that they can ask questions based on county comments and then of course, based on the feedback we get tonight from residents and from the commission. Diane?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may. Just a few notes. I mean, to say that this is complex, it's, you know, we've all been through something that was itself really complex, you know? And by the way, thank you all for all of your efforts in the Hillwood era, but anyway. The issue here is that the federal government in particular, followed by the state, really tied this up very, very tightly. There is very little space for local municipalities to do much about this. To begin with, for those who are, you know, viewing online or wherever, we are not able to say no to this. Let's just start right there. We cannot do that. So the best that we can do is to be sure on the issues, as Alex said, mainly of aesthetics and safety. You know, the regularity of inspection, those kinds of things. The committee worked really hard on this. We're very glad we have the specialized council that we had. And I would just encourage you, if there's anything that you find in this language that is a question to you, those attorneys are available, Alex is available. You know, I would just say to you that from my standpoint, we worked through this as thoroughly as we could.
And correct me if I'm wrong, this is for the next grade of wireless communication. It's what, we're done with 3G, we're mostly on 4G, some of us have 5G.
Yeah.
And these are essentially relay devices.
Yeah, I mean, it's a situation where what you're going to have is most people really want 5G. But what they don't realize is that there are some, there are some aesthetic issues involved in getting the 5G that they want. But it's sort of past that at this point. This is coming. This is coming. So get your 5G, you know, things ready. I can't tell you what the timing is. Alex and I were just talking about that yesterday. It's going to be up to the private companies when they, you know, move in and start doing this. But we want to be ready with this ordinance.
And I see that there's requirements for insurance. There's licensing fees. So there could be some future opportunities there for the borough.
Yeah, I think we, I think we've gotten as, gone as far as we can with that in the, in the moment. And, you know, down the road, we'll constantly, as far as I'm concerned, we'll constantly revisit what we can do with those fees. But I think starting at, we've gone as far as we can go.
Okay. And like you said, you know, they're not likely to be tie, I'm sorry, tower-based. These are going to be small boxes on telephone poles.
Well, we have, the regulations cover all the different types. But I think the ones that are going to be of most interest to our residents are the new small facilities, they call them small facilities, that are like canisters or there's where the aesthetics comes in. We've limited that to the extent that we can. And we've talked about there are design standards that are part, that are an appendage to the ordinance and part of the ordinance. That is where you find the detailed descriptions of what we are permitting and, and how we're enforcing that.
And I see we submitted it to the county already.
Yeah.
For the review.
Yeah.
And we've gotten some minor comments back or on, not so much on the meat of the ordinance, just on timing and issues on borough manager versus somebody else.
Right, right.
So those will, in all likelihood, be put back into the final draft of the resolution, I would assume.
Yeah, I can't speak to that one way or the other at this point because I don't think the council, you know, has really had an opportunity to discuss that in full. Again, we have legal counsel, you know, engineers and all those folks. So we're, we'll be having those conversations with them, but it will be.
Yeah, I just say that because they looked minor to me.
They are.
They are draft, more drafting and substantive.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else have questions they want to bring up?
I had a few things that jumped out at me. Some may not be super critical, but I was wondering if the definition of the professional engineer might need to be expanded on a little bit. As I went through this, I saw that there was many places that a professional engineer was required. But there's some things, and the way it's described in the definitions, it's yeah, it's someone who's regularly involved with the development, construction, operation, inspection, maintenance and removal of wireless facilities. That's pretty broad, but for some of these submittals, for example, let me find something I tend to. For some of those, we might want to specifically require a structural engineer. You know, engineers have their own expertises as well. Like for example, I wouldn't want the electrical engineer to design the foundations for a tower. I would want to see structural engineering drawings for that. And, and there's a lot of simple engineering involved with respect to getting setbacks and property lines and structure. and structures that are nearby properly located on some drawings. I'd like to see a civil engineer do that as opposed to an electrical engineer. Not to, not to disparage electrical engineers, but they've got a lot involved with their own expertise for these. So I thought that maybe some words about that could be included to help that notion if we think it's important. I can relay, um, some text that I had jotted down here, um, afterwards or?
That would be very helpful.
Okay.
Why don't we just do it now? We're going to go and see, I'm just suggesting, or you want to come, you have another, um, separate time or audit, go do this?
No, you, this is your, you have the floor to make recommendations or have discussion about concerns or questions.
I'm, I'm just thinking maybe it's, it's, it's germane to the moment, maybe just finish off because I'm interested.
Oh, okay. Well, here, and I'll, I'll follow up while I'll type it out and then email it to you, Alex. So, um, I thought, um, um, second long sentence after what is in the definition. And, and the thought process here started in other places. And then I thought, well, this keeps coming up. Maybe if it was just put the bed, so to speak, in the definition, it would cover all of the, um, appropriate place. So I thought, um, you know, where it's talking about someone who's regularly involved with all this stuff. And then I, I wrote a sentence here, aspects relative to civil, structural and electrical engineering shall be designed by professionals trained in those respective, respective fields and their seal fix to all documents authored.
A page or two you look at.
I was thinking that could be tacked on, uh, in page three.
Okay, great. Yeah, mark it there.
Oh, and while I'm looking at that, the little, I don't know if it's a widow or an orphan, the public rights of way. Page break, unfortunate. But, um, I was somewhere in here and I saw R O W. I, of course, I know what R O W is right away. And it, it was a paragraph that seemed to be void of any explanation to someone who didn't know what that was. And, and I thought, oh, maybe it's in the, in the definitions. I went to the definitions and I stopped looking, um, I started looking for R and I didn't see anything under R. But then later on, I saw it someplace else where it was referenced as a public rights of way. And then, so I don't know, maybe it should be rights of way, comma, public parentheses, R O W or something. I don't know, that's a really small, um, concern. Okay, here's another small concern on page 12. Uh, paragraph 304 dot one dot two dot two, underground district. It says, uh, that they shall not be located in an area in which utilities are required to be located underground. I don't know why I had this thought, but required or exists to be underground. If, if they're all underground, like, well, say for example, Italy and Bernaby. They're, if it's not required, but they all exist to be underground, maybe we still want them to stay underground or not be there at all. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that because it makes me wonder if it ever was actually designated as an underground district. It just may have been the chosen method of the developer, but nothing precludes that.
Right.
I'm doing it. So I, I follow what you're saying.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And, um, I thought the county had some, some good points and yeah, there, there's small little things, uh, I see here that they have an issue with the applicant, uh, mailing notices. So, um.
Yeah, that was, that was a mistake on our part drafting it. That's something that we would, would be doing.
Okay. Well, so then I, I made a little note here on page 17. It's a odd paragraph, the, the middle sentence doesn't really belong, because it doesn't have anything to do with lighting per se. But I don't have a recommendation of where to put that, but I, um, yeah, what I thought was when it's talking about the, the finish of the, uh, of the tower, uh, which I presume is steel, it's not mentioned, but, um, where it says towers shall be galvanized and or painted with a rust prohibitive paint to that appropriate color. What we wouldn't want to happen is that it's not galvanized and painted with just a, um, a rust inhibitive, zinc rich primer, you know, you've seen it, it's sort of a reddish color, some of them are gray. That steel will look rusty in less than a year. So what I think we really want is to be galvanized and painted with a rust prohibitive. I would prefer to say high performance coating because, um, it's a different category of paints per se. So that's, that's something that I deal with in my travels. Um, and I think there was just one other thing that struck me as odd. And it had to do with, um, well, I guess in the, um, in the definitions, stealth technology. I wouldn't, the word technology doesn't seem to be, that fits me. I would have called it stealth design, because if you read the paragraph, technology has more to do with the wires and the wireless and, and all that kind of magic. But when it comes to, um, special colors or bushes or something architectural, that's more of a design thing. So the word technology just doesn't feel right to me. So I would suggest stealth design. I think that was all I had on that. Yeah, it's complicated. There's basically three different types of facilities that are discussed here.
Yeah.
And the county is suggesting we consider whether, why would the county be considered suggesting we consider whether these particular uh, districts, zoning districts are appropriate when we can't disallow it anywhere?
Good question.
This is boilerplate language of theirs. I, I don't know.
It's like, there's a similar comment made for the short-term rentals.
Yes, and that's what made me think it's probably boilerplate line comments, they just copy and paste into stuff. But I don't know.
I mean, I would think they were just referring to the fact that they have, uh, they have jurisdiction. And that's it, but, but that doesn't mean that there's no influence on our part. I mean, they're all those, those districts. So for instance, on page nine, uh, you, you, on, one, one of my problems with this is, uh, it's one thing to say these things, maybe not these three types, but it would be nice to have an example. So for instance, um, in, in 2014, I was on the zoning hearing board. I was chairman of it at that time Verizon came, uh, they had made a deal with the, uh, uh, country club. And I can appreciate the way it was presented to me, to us, but because it was kind of a fait accompli as opposed to, okay, no more over here. Uh, but anyhow, um, the, the issue is that that flagpole had, we approved of, of very yes, it's, it's not just a little, it's a anyhow, uh, it was, uh, we have proved that with conditions and all. And Verizon has one, um, uh, antenna in there. And there is room for a second antenna should any other, um, communications company so desire. But that's not, that's in an R, that's in R2, I think, um. And I guess my question in this was, here it says C1 on page nine. Well, we have a, we have an existing tower in R2. I don't know how many people know that, but it's there. The idea was that it would be somewhat stealth, um, and make it into a flagpole that wasn't illuminated. So that's the lighting part of it. So far it hasn't rusted, uh, we know. I was wondering what that was, so it's not a missile site? No, no, okay. It was verified by Chinese balloon. I'm sorry. Anyhow, um, so that was one of my concerns on here. Why it's specifically C1 as though it, I just want somebody to know that it exists elsewhere. I don't know if it exists anywhere else in the borough.
There's a couple of attorneys in the room who might be able to, and online who might be able to correct this. I mean, but if it's not permissible in a district, um, they would have to attempt to get our zoning ordinance amended, added there or cure the zoning ordinance. We do allow it, we would allow it if this is passed in C1. But.
Well, they have variants too, but what, what do you?
But, but for that kind of tower, I, I would assume that, you know, I, I guess to your point, if you're suggesting they already have the permission, then this new move. But we did not want to add R2 as a district for towers.
I'm only going to add.
Yeah, so we wanted to, so we wanted to keep it into the C1.
So this affects what's moving forward. I'm just for the sake of anyone's knowledge that there already is one up there in an R2 district.
Yeah, the difference is it's, it's not a small scale facility. It's a, a full cell tower. And, and that's where the FCC is at, they wanted to carve out for us, because these are a lot different than what we were doing for the last 20 or 30 years with sail towers being large structures and, and a lot larger coverage.
So, so we are allowed to relegate towers to a specific district?
For this, yes. If someone wants to specifically create a tower to have the small scale facilities, they can only do it in that district.
And that's, that would be subject to such things and, and including the fact that that district's appropriate. You can construct a reasonable tower that, you know,
Right.
have reception, you can't just put it into some crazy zoning district that you make that, you know, would never work for a tower construction. But, but yes.
Is this, uh, did we write anything that addresses existing facilities at all? I don't remember seeing it.
Okay.
My, my understanding again, other than a building permit, they've got a tower, they can put it on. If there's no zoning requirement, there's a tower right here on William Penn Highway. And if they want to sublease to somebody or add something, they need a building permit to inspect the electrical and insulation. But they don't come back to us for any sort of zoning sighting.
What's it, is, I, I don't, again, I'm unfamiliar. So if anybody wants those decisions, there are two of them, I have a copy here, you can have it. If you don't, doesn't matter. I, I'm just pointing it out, so.
Those are the Edgewood decisions?
Yes.
You can get those online.
So I mean, a variant is by its nature a variant, so it wasn't permitted in that district.
Yeah.
So you granted a variant to them.
Yeah. With some conditions, of course. One of the things I noticed there, again, this is probably style, but each of these three sections, um, the way they're assembled, they're very dissimilar. There's, I mean, I may have missed it because there's eighty some pages to read. But it, it doesn't make sense to me. I, you know, maybe just style preference, I don't know, that you have consistency. And I, maybe the topic is different, but what goes into each topic is fairly similar, like bond and, and other types of things. And so, um, here it's this one, there's someplace else, and here it's all the whole other, you know, some other location. So the, the point of it is, when, from my perspective, maybe it was just prejudice by being on a zoning hearing board. When you have to, when people come in, um, they're not necessarily, even the attorney messed up. That's why we had two hearings for his on Verizon. Everybody doesn't get it all the first time. They don't always have, have clear understanding. And so, um, you know, the council's involved, the, the planning commission's involved in this. The, the, the applicant has their issues. If something comes to the zoning hearing board, then they have to go through and try to find stuff and make comparisons. And, and maybe you might say that each of these three stand alone. I, I would grant you that, I understand that. But again, there's just such incredible diverse, um, um, dissimilarity in the way they're organized. It's, uh, uh, okay, so here's noise on this page, where's noise somewhere else? Well, it's not in that particular similar location. Uh, that's maybe that's just, uh, that's, that's, um, bear with me, there's a lot of pages to go through here.
I thought it was.
Go ahead. Thought of another thing, um, in the design manual for the small facilities, uh, the definition for decorative poles refers to a municipality owned pole. Are they, are the poles owned by the municipality? Or are they owned, it seemed like going through all this that they were owned by the facility, um, producers.
I, I suspect that's a term, like if you looked at a number of Cohen ordinances that might be in those. You know, you can think of a small borough as decorative light standards in their community. Or is invested in decorative, um, like in Murraysville, street traffic lights are decorative. I think that's what's referred to.
Okay.
We have very few of those.
Yeah, we.
I wouldn't call them decorative either, though they might be, you know, we might get a grant. And when we upgrade an intersection, choose to, um, make it more appealing.
Uh, not, not, we got another concern, uh, comment. On page four, there's small wireless communications facility, um, uh, criteria. And then there's a whole section devoted to, uh, small wireless communication facilities. And then to boot, there's a third document, small wireless communications facilities design manual. And, uh, to me, the manual, i- if this is like a guideline for, um, an engineer or architect, whatever, whomever, any of those engineers to design something. I would imagine that that would be given to someone at the application process. All I'm saying is there's, so when you go to for a permit, you got to look here, you got to look there, and you got to look at the third document. And I'm just curious why it's in three parts? Why isn't everything just put in the section on, that's my recommendation. I'm not being critical of whoever put this together, I'm just saying, um, there's a little here, a little there, and whatever. Make sense?
That was, that was a comment that was made, I think, by the county as well, suggesting that possibly the design guidelines.
Yeah, I went, went through this before I looked at the county.
Be made part of, you know, being more explicit, be might be part of the ordinance.
Well, I think maybe what Dan might be, uh, kind of getting to, there's, there's some common out, there's three different types of facilities. Talked about here, and all three of them have some things that are literally the same in terms of timing or bonds and stuff. And maybe some of those common things could be taken out, uh, and, and, and be a standalone and then just referred to. You know, maybe they'd be in a, in a, in a general front section before you get to the three types of facilities. And then, uh, if there's a, if there's a need to refer to, uh, any of those, they can just refer back and you don't have to repeat the same words. It'll just same thing with, I, it's okay by me, but you know, the, on the spiel about professional engineer. It said once in the definitions, you shouldn't have to use all those words over you, just say professional engineer. And the definition carries all that other stuff, you don't have to keep saying it. But I don't know, I, I, maybe there's some, uh, legal, um, uh, reasons for having more words.
They do get paid for the word, I hear.
Oh, I heard that too.
I think in context too, it's, you know, they think about the people that are going to be making or applying for these permits. They're going to be sophisticated, you know, telecommunications providers with council. And so, you know, one may be, Columbia converts them to an average person. They're, they're used to seeing these, they kind of already know without even looking, particularly because Cohen's are so standardized.
Yes, everybody's.
Where has and where for. I wouldn't take issue with that except to say that at that Verizon hearing in 2014, the attorney was a wee bit condescending to, to the zoning hearing board. And then, and then what he didn't realize was he applied for one, uh, very, one item and forgot to include the other. And it's tremendously not turning, I'm sure he was or is, you know, even he made a mistake, you know? And so when we had to come back in two months and go through the dance again, I mean, we were kind and we didn't, you know, we didn't say, you know, yeah, 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 yeah. It was like, well, here it is. So, uh, human errors, just you can count on it. So. I'm not sure if I had anything else. So what's next, uh, for this? I guess we'll, the Cohen, uh, folks, uh, take and try to incorporate the county's comments.
As well as Steve's, being this being recorded tonight is I'll make sure that, um, Joel gets a chance to look at it from. You know. And hear all your comments about, I think, about half an hour, so, yeah, okay.
Is this, is this replacing an existing section of the, uh, ordinance?
We did not have them, I think while we did talk about, um, communication facilities on this, so this is new.
Don't we have? This is a. Zoning ordinance amendment, though we have provisions in these zoning ordinance now, we're going to, yeah, for what we would have considered the standard cellular systems. The these were not contemplated when that language was there, so.
So these are all not that same type of system?
Correct, yeah. But it's, but it's part of what, you know, Gavin and our due diligence at the end. You know, it's just making sure we've got some of those consistency, and again, the county pointed out some of that in their letters that. You know, make sure the solicitor looks at this, um, kind of language.
Yeah. And the comment about the.
Because we, just to, just to be clear, we struggled about having it be a standalone. All the, as its own, some, all this is a standalone outside the zoning ordinance. Um, this is a chapter within their code, but we wanted it to be in our zoning ordinance, um, and handle it that way, so. Um, part of that is on us then to make sure we're consistent with what we already have.
Diane, this, these, uh, this drafting and the discussions.
Yeah.
Started what, over a year ago?
Uh, we started last spring, I'd say about a year, about a year, yeah.
Okay.
We were. We were heavily into the, into the, uh, detailed review by midsummer, I would say. I'm afraid you're muted.
Sorry, my dog keeps barking, this is an add-on to the.
I like dogs.
And, uh, es- essentially, um. We're trying to regulate what it is we can.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, we can't stop them, but we can say if you.
Right.
If if you need to put them on, if you want to put them on private property, you have to show permission from that property owner.
Yes, and 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 you've got to pass, you've got to get, get the thing right in terms of the aesthetics. I think the biggest pushback frankly, that we're going to have from residences, when these things start to be installed and they don't like the way they look. Uh, and, uh, so we've tried to limit the size, you know, the color, the shape. Uh, you know, we've tried to have as much control over that as we can at the technical level, uh, you know.
And we're not talking, yeah, I mean, anybody could Google and see what these look like.
Well, I would suggest that commission members do that, um, I think there are, there are many different ways that this has been done, some are. Installed on the sides of buildings, some are, they look like streetlights and they're not. Uh, one of the things are just raised about, you know, uh. Borough owned, uh, poles, as Alex said, those, those are, sometimes the municipality will choose. To get all new light posts. And have the light coming out of it and then the, and then the small facility on top, so if you go online. And look at the various kinds of things they have, you'll see, you know, people, some people have been very creative with them.
And nothing stops people from, or stopping the developer from putting them on telephone poles.
No, as a matter of fact, that's what we expect will happen, you know, my editorial comment is, uh, maybe someone should had better look at the condition of the poles first. You know, but.
But again, you know, that's not our purview.
No, well, you know, um, there there will be discussions, you know, I mean, it's. Um, yeah, uh, we've tried to make sure that this is going to be done at a safety standard that we can be proud of, an aesthetic standard that we can be proud of. And just the fact that, you know, I frankly was, Alex knows, pretty put out when I found out exactly how little. Space we had for local control, it was pretty shocking. Um, you know, but people, people did their homework, what can I tell you?
So preemption's all about.
Yes, exactly.
I've seen some that are supposed to look like trees.
Yeah, they had them in Arizona, they look on like tops of.
Cacti, exactly.
All kinds of wacky things.
Well, the other question here also, of course, is expense, you know, um, how much? It's like everything else that we do, how far do you go before someone pushes back, you know, and and to what extent do they push back? And we're always coming up against the big guys, aren't we, guys?
Well, and quite honestly, people want five G technology.
Exactly.
I want to sit here and be able to zoom and I want to sit here and be able to use my phone.
You know.
Until I got a five G, I couldn't use cell towers in Churchill very well.
I know, I know, so that's, that, that's the other, that's the other side of it, people want this, and this is if they want it, this is, this is how they're going to get it.
Yeah, and this is turning out to be old technology as we speak, actually.
Well, yeah, I'm I'm ready to go to the lean tour in the forest and, uh, you know. Maybe with some solar panels to generate some light and I'm I'm ready to go.
All right, any other discussion?
You have a comment. And with that five G, uh, what, what I said in some of those meetings with the, uh, committee did that. Um, just to educate myself about five G, it's really just the fifth generation, this is the next step. And I, we did, I went online a little bit, they're, they were actually small things on the top pole. Unless someone pointed it out to you, probably wouldn't know what it was. It's not this massive steel thing that's being constructed somewhere, they're actually kind of small. Like you said, you can't stop them, but we can regulate it. Um, I think if they, you know, place them in places where, like I said, unless someone pointed out to you, you wouldn't know what it was.
Okay. All right, um, do we have a motion to recommend? This to, uh, approval to Borough Council?
I make the motion, we recommend approval subject to the comments of the county and subject to the comments made here this evening. By the planning commission members.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, or all saying no, say no, sorry, I can't see everybody's hands. Okay, then it, uh, we will recommend it to, uh, Borough Council. All right, uh, the next, uh, ordinance amendment is for the short, short term rentals. Um, the, uh. Airbnb type amendment. And, uh, and then Alex, you want to give us a little bit of background on this and perhaps the solicitor could also give us a little bit of background as well?
So again, we have, uh, everyone to see the language that we have on the agenda, item five. This will be amending the Churchill Borough zoning ordinance, provide the definition for short term rental use of a dwelling. And authorize a short term rental use of a dwelling as a conditional use, the residential zoning districts of the borough. And establish criteria and conditions related there too. Um, it was already commented by the, by Larry and and the public comment period, so you have a little head start here. Um, like the five G, um, small wireless facilities, the council. Use the committee, the infrastructure committee, develop the draft ordinance, so it's before your review and comment this evening. Uh, this is like cell tower, small facilities been a hot hot issue, uh, throughout. The Commonwealth and around the country for the last few years, um, while we did not retain special counsel. To address this, we use the firm Tucker Arnsberg, which Gavin is our solicitor, um, to to do that, and Weston's been. With us from the beginning, he worked with the committee on on drafting. Um, Tucker, the Tucker Arnsberg firm. Put out a, a, a number of presentations on this before we got started with them, trying to address, I think, some of the issues that were raised and issued by public comment. You know, sort of like, are they happening, would anything stop them from happening, how do we know they're happening, and under what. Conditions do they, could they be happening and that kind of thing, I think those are the kind of issues that drew council to have a concern. I think if someone sent from the public comment to get out ahead of. These and try to, if they do or are, they are happening, find a way to have some. Ability to control or limit the impacts, the negative impacts of those, so I won't say much more than that. Diane was a member of that committee, and so if you want to go ahead and talk a little bit about your involvement and help us frame. What's before the commission this evening?
Yeah, so presently in the borough, there aren't any regulations with respect to short term rental. And there was a question during public comment, I know what the impact of that is, can anybody just have a short term rental, and the short answer to that is yes. Because of the lack of a regulation, um, effectively anybody in in any zoning district. Could right now, um, utilize their property as a short term rental, and the borough would be without really recourse, obviously, subject to criminal or other, you know, violations happening there. But based on the short term rental use alone, um, there's, there's no recourse for the borough to go in there and and stop that. So honestly, you know, we wanted to develop. Reasonable regulations around the the use of properties as work for rental, um, and outright exclusion. Um, although, isn't an issue that has made its way through the Pennsylvania public courts right now. Um, the sort of the predominating idea is that outright ban of short term rentals would be unconstitutional. In violation of individuals' property rights to to use their property. Um, and that obviously doesn't mean that they can't be regulated and they can't be restricted to certain zoning districts. Um, and so in development with the infrastructure committee, there was a determination that we would. Permit short term rental, um, in the residential zoning districts of the borough. Um, and obviously as a conditional use, there's a number of conditions that are set forth, I'm sure you've read through, um, but. High level, it would require them to obtain an annual pay, uh, permit, pay a fee for that. Um, and also have their properties inspected on an annual basis to ensure, you know, compliance with the code and and make sure that, you know, it's a safe place for. People to be with, um, and obviously, you know, there's a number of other restrictions in terms of how. The the renters can use that property and and in the event that renters would violate. These provisions in any way, uh, the recourse would be against the property owner, you effectively revoke this permit and you could subject them to other fines penalties as well. Um, so that's sort of, I guess broadly what, um, you know, is my recollection of the, uh. Meetings that we had with the infrastructure committee in developing this, and obviously there's a few of you here online, so if you would want to share anything else that I may have left out, please feel free.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, if I may, Madam Chair. Um, you know. This is one of those things where. You know, I'll speak for myself, I'm not thrilled about this at all. But I have listened to what the consequences are of doing nothing, and we just heard what some of those are. So, you know, do we run the risk of just people's good judgment across the borough about who they might have staying in their house? And, uh, what is our obligation to the people who might live in their neighborhood next door? Because the fact of the matter is that people are going to be doing this anyway. They're going to be having people staying in their homes anyway, and they're going to be getting money for that anyway. And unless we become a complete police state. And wrap and, you know, inspect who's at the house at any given point, the best we can do. Uh, is to, uh, have this ordinance that gives us some power. To, uh, make sure that people who were staying in someone else's house. Meet certain, you know, the homeowner meets certain criteria for the conditions under which that happens. Um, you know, I'm not a fan, but I'm also, I'm also a realist.
You can ask the chair, I guess, typically, I mean, it's the, the commission. And the public has had a chance to speak, but, but. You get, you get a chance, Mayor, at the, at three or council meeting session, but but if, if the chair would like to entertain your comment.
I'll defer, I'll, I'll, go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, I, I was just, you know, Diane kind of took the words right out of my mouth, because it has come to my attention. More than once that there are properties being used in the borough for that purpose. And we have no way of controlling it, so just to, just to add to that, it's being done.
I don't want to put you on the spot, Weston, but I guess the question is. By a lot of people, they're assuming, well, isn't that how become a business? And in a residential zone, how could they be running a business, I mean, that's been the argument all over the state. Right, that's been the, the way just to come at it, so, I don't know if the courts. And then, and they won't rule that isn't necessarily a business if someone is renting. Some leasing, whether the term is short term.
I haven't, I haven't seen anything in terms of how they've characterized it as business or non-business, um. You know, there are some cases that are proceeding, and the courts have upheld. Just like effectively bans in some single family residential areas. Um, as contrary to effectively, you know, the the use. Um, and and character of of those districts. Um, but in terms of how they, how they're characterizing it, I don't know. Um, what they've done in that respect, and I, I still, as I said before, you know, there hasn't been a case yet. Um, litigating any municipalities in in tighter ban of the short term rental use.
Girl, let's see it first. So, is it your opinion? Well. You mentioned initially, maybe if we had a ban, it's that no rentals for any time period shorter than six months. If we had that absolute ban. There, there's no law out there that says that ban would be unconstitutional or enforceable.
There's no specific law that says those words exactly, obviously, you know, the claim that would be made would be unconstitutional grounds. Um, and, you know, how, how that would play out, we still, you don't really know.
So the courts haven't passed, and the courts have an issue, the appellate courts have an issue, a decision on that question.
They have not.
So can we just ban short term rentals, and then once that case comes down the road? Enact this ordinance or something like it, and maybe we get stuck, you know, with one or two that we haven't regulated, but then we enact the ordinance.
The, the risk would be that you're the one getting sued, the boroughs are the one getting sued.
How are these regulations typically enforced?
The zoning officer.
So through fines?
Fines, there's, I mean, imprisonment is possible as well, it it generally, these things go in the magistrate court. On the first level, and they have jurisdictional limits in terms of, you know, the amount of money they can award. But, uh, that's generally how it goes, property already decided by the zoning officer, assuming that they don't correct the violation. Uh, complaints filed against them with the magistrate court to recruit the penalties and costs and, uh, to obviously evade the violation.
The only thing that's in here is losing your permit. Uh, there's nothing in here about going to jail, so.
I'm not. Well, it does, it incorporates as well as fines and costs and other penalties to set forth in, in the zoning ordinance and in the municipality's planning code, so effectively anything that. You know, you can do by law.
Boiler.
Yeah.
So if they violated fines or assessed, the fines would be on a daily basis theoretically.
Yep, each day that the violation would continue would be a separate violation.
So, one thing, and, yes, that's why we're here to be petty, I suppose, but, so when a, an inspector is going into someone's home. Who presumably already has a. who presumably already has a occupancy permit, then I guess the person would be just looking for anything that would be obvious that was failing or something like that? I mean, what would they be looking for to make sure that the bedrooms have double beds? I mean, what would you be looking for?
Smoke detectors. I can't speak to what the code enforcement officer would look like. I assume it would be typical to an occupancy permit inspection. But I know that whenever we were developing in the infrastructure committee, the major concerns were such things as, you know, to make sure that the fire detectors are all there and functioning. And you're looking for, you know, the bigger things that are really going to create a problem.
And when they, when they issue a permit position, will they get posted like a building permits? Like on the front window of the living room, everybody knows that. I'm just asking, you know.
I would not anticipate.
Yeah, I wouldn't either, but I was just.
It would just be on record with the borough. So they would, they would have the information to know that that property was permitted.
Conceptually, these are, have low and no different impact than any other house on that street. You know, it's sort of the intent. And having it be regulated is if they seem to always be parking more cars where they're not supposed to and be doing other things that make it not a regular single-family. That's where how this kind of comes into play. Some of us, I have, have been a short-term renter at an Airbnb in several different cities, Lancaster, Toronto. Yeah, so we were there, like a single family, in a single-family home. We came and went in the morning to go to the tourist sites of the cities we were in, and we left. You know, so, you know, to the neighbor next door, there was no difference than a year-round single-family homeowner-occupied unit. And that's what we're trying to ensure, that if somebody is using one of these, they're just behaving as any homeowner-occupied unit would be. A couple of cars, come and go, quiet, no disturbance. But if you have one of these and you become one of those party houses or whatever, now we have ways to kind of come back at you and revoke that and become more punitive in our approach.
So is the assumption here that the house is otherwise unoccupied? In other words, that the homeowner would not be, you know, also living there?
It could be a, it could be a snowbird. Or you could, you could be a snowbird where part of the year you're there, part of the year you're not. I was in a unit that we were part of the unit. But that's a different kind of scenario. You know, I mean, we don't have, there are single-family units here. But you can have a scenario, I guess, in a multifamily district where one of the, you know, one of these units within the multifamily is being short-term rental.
One of the county's comments was that we might want to consider if we would allow consecutive periods of rental, thirty days or whatever. So that snowbird scenario would be one that fits that question. So if someone doesn't have a permit and they are getting fined, and someone has rented that for more than a couple of days, I know that landlords, in terms of renting apartments or what have, have a hard time. You're not allowed to kick out residents. There's a lot of rules about that. And so does this have more teeth than that scenario just because it's short-term? A rhetorical question.
Yeah, in terms of evicting the.
Eviction, yeah.
They would be, they would have to proceed through the same processes as any other rental arrangement. As soon as, you know, they step foot in that property, they have a right of occupancy that they retain until, you know, basically, you get an order saying that they need to leave. No special rights just because it's short-term as opposed to long-term. And again, you know, the borough's primary recourse will be to the property owner, the landlord, effectively, and not to the renter. Of course, the renter's, again, doing criminal things and the like, but, you know, the police can go and do what they do. But no, in terms of eviction, it's the same process as it would be in any other rental situation.
So we need to decide whether it's appropriate to proceed with regulations like this or test the waters in terms of disallowing it completely and chancing all those legal hassles and costs?
Do we have any evidence that this is a, that this is a genuine problem? That there's, that the community's fraught with this? Do we have even one example that we know of?
We have had no reportable issues and the evidence has been anecdotal. There's not been any sort of assessment of how many of these have. I know a number of us look online. Because you, that's how these are done, right? You go to the different vendors and try to find if someone is doing it. And I've not been able to locate one that way.
Well, two things. One, I was wondering if we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. Number two, take suggestion. I mean, we could do it and wait till somebody decides to have a problem with it. I don't, I mean, I know that chances that there is someone out there who will have a problem with it. But I just don't know if this, and this is a new concept to me and a new issue.
Well, it seems to me we have three options. One is the borough does nothing and we can't control anybody and they can do what they please. Second is we can ban it and take the risk that we get sued and we're the test case and we bear the brunt of those legal fees. The third is adopt some sort of regulation and do what we can. And if it's upheld that a ban is appropriate or we could restrict it further, we revisit the ordinance in accordance with that direction. Personally, I don't think that banning and then take, hoping we don't get sued and bearing the brunt of the legal fees. No offense, Carter, or counsel. I don't believe we're on strong footing, although Pennsylvania may not have seen it challenged. Other states have had it challenged and they have not been successful.
Weston, are there municipalities in the county that you're aware of that have an outright ban?
There are not.
There are other municipalities outside of the county that you're aware of that have an outright ban?
Not aware of. See much more lack of any regulation. And obviously, there's any ordinance that particularly recently that are coming up just like this. So because it's become such a, it is kind of a newer issue, I don't think that it's had enough time to create enough problems to get through the appellate court system yet.
Alice, did you say you're not aware of any short-term rentals?
Personally, no. Again, anecdotally, I've heard that I'm not.
So you've heard people say, yeah, I think they're renting as an Airbnb or?
Correct. But again, that's anecdotal, that's not verified, I've never.
Well, putting regulations in place certainly would be a service to those who are renting, making sure that they're in a safe place.
Yeah, theoretically, considering most of Churchill was built before Churchill adopted a building code. So most of us are living in places that are not up to code. Ask your local plumber every time they come to the house.
Right, right. Now, I want to be clear. I mean, like I said, I am, you know, I'm not a fan of all this. I'm trying to, you know, thread the needle, use the crystal ball, whatever. I mean, I've heard things, but I have no proof. And, you know, and I don't know how the borough could have proof with system we could put in place. And that's how we arrived here. If you have no basis for questioning, you know, people living in someone's house when they don't own that house and they, they're not long-term rentals, the borough is basically powerless to do much of anything.
Yeah, without the registration, I mean, we all. I know of several houses in the borough that people move in and out of constantly. I don't know if they're Airbnb or.
Right.
There's absentee landlords or there, I know a couple that are families that mom and dad passed away and the kids are just hanging on to the house and they can't figure it out. They rent it out.
Yeah. Well, the one that I've heard, which I find real credible, is snowbirds renting out the house to friends' kids, okay, for like a long weekend, when they're coming home from the holiday or when there's a big football game. Instead of staying in a hotel, they get the whole house.
Yeah, golf tournaments.
Yeah, but, you know, if there's kids, if we know they're there, if we know they're there and the application has been made and we're aware that they're doing that and somebody calls and says, I think there's a problem, we'll know what we're dealing with. You know? As I say, I'm persuaded in either direction. I'm not, I don't like the fact that this is going on probably and we don't have any way of monitoring it or anything like that. On the other hand, I'm with you, Megan. I mean, I don't want to be another test case, you know? We've, we're not in a position as a municipality to, you know, to take on the, you know, the world.
We don't, we're not the city of Pittsburgh. We don't have a legal department, we don't have the funds to do it.
Yeah, I mean, heaven knows we've been along on that the last few years. So, yeah, I'm persuadable, really, in either direction.
Has our building code official had any comments on any of this? It probably will put more work on their table if they can handle it.
So we use BIU as our inspector. And we take the applications and give them to them for that. So it's part-time and it's as a workload is, right? So they'll be happy to take more hours and do, you know, do more of the work. And if it got to be what we needed more from BIU, they would just accommodate with maybe another inspector. It'd be probably the same person who does currently our occupancy inspections is also the person who's doing our property maintenance code inspections.
Makes sense. Have they had any experience doing this kind of thing in any other municipalities? Run across enlightened?
Yeah, I've not talked to Dave specifically about that. He knows what's going on, but since he has several communities, he doesn't necessarily come to our committee meetings. We've had for a couple of things. When we were doing the occupancy permit, for example, and revising that, he was very involved in that. I'm not having involved in that. I can ask him certainly, you know, what's been experienced with other communities where they're, they've already done this, where I would have regulated, that's a good idea.
Just curious. I guess to repeat what Megan said, we have three options. That's do nothing, which is where we are now, right? So anybody could come in and do this and there's nothing we could say about it. Or we ban it, which I think if that's not been done yet and we're not aware of anyone doing it, I guess that's kind of, if we ban it, then we will stand out for being, you know, the municipality that banned these types of rentals. And I guess that's asking for a challenge. Or the third is we go with this and, you know, if it happens, we maintain some control of it. We have some tools to deal with problems if they arise, we know of it.
Yeah, I think we could always come back and modify it if the, if the case law changes. And right now, the way this is drafted, you know, we get to set what, the permit for one year, we get to set the rate for that. They have to pay for the inspection through a fee. So we were, we would be covered there. So there wouldn't be really any cost to us. They have to maintain the records of all the rental records and give them to us at our request. All parking has to be located off-street, which is the way it is in Churchill anyway. The homeowners association has to approve if there is one. I'm not aware of any. And we're limiting the occupancy to two adults per bedroom for the short-term rental. So it's, I'm presuming that's to stop the party house.
Right.
And then they have to follow all the other ordinances with respect to noise, smoke, et cetera.
Well, a lot of good thoughts that put into this for all those purposes. Has any thought been given to how we can, how we would, if this moves ahead, how we would let everyone know it's the new rule in town?
You know, well, I'm sorry, go ahead, Megan.
No, go ahead, Diane.
No, it's a chicken and egg thing here for me. If you do this, does it invite the activity? Or by doing this, do you restrict the activity? In other words, you're a person who has a house and you're not going to be in the house part of the time? Or just as Megan said, there is someone who's inherited a property? And so it's just as easy for them to have, to make some money, have some petty people in and out. So the, you know, going to the opposition that we heard tonight, does passing this ordinance invite more of this activity? Or does it repress this activity? Now, to me, that is, that's the crux of the works. So we have to judge which of those it is. What we, what we don't want is disruption in the community. So.
But correct me, and maybe the solicitor could ask. More and more municipalities are doing this.
Oh, yeah.
At least to have some teeth.
Yeah.
To stop the north side type.
Exactly. Yeah.
To the extent possible.
Yeah.
I, to me, I think you run the, if we have the ordinance and people know about it, you have the ability to say you have got to file for your permit.
Yeah.
And if they don't, you have leverage to say you cannot do that.
Right.
The flip side is, I'd, for the most part, I'd rather see somebody in an Airbnb in the property next to me that's abandoned.
I know.
Then it'd go empty and deteriorate. There's some of those.
Right. And see, I mean, I think, I mean, and again, this is just totally anecdotal in terms of my own observation. We have a senior-heavy population. And as those houses turn over and they have family members who do not live in the Pittsburgh area, I think this activity becomes more likely.
Yes.
Well, the first gentleman spoke, said he moved here in 1988. And he was against this, this idea. And I agree with him in his argument. I've been here, I first moved here fifty-three or fifty-four years ago. This was a residential community. Yes, Westinghouse was here, but that's an isolated, I don't want to talk about that. But this was a residential community. And all the years I've been here, for the most part, I think there's been a pride in what this community has been. And when you say Churchill, it may be at least the people I know, that means something, okay? And it has a reputation. To me, my hesitancy, and Diane, I probably am in the middle like you on this. My hesitancy is just that we continue to write things off because it's an old generation or we need to do it for the young people. And, you know, I don't, just don't know if that's, if that's something that I can buy into. I just appreciate the fact that it is a residential community. On the street I live, there was a Dr. Bush, you may know who he is, a dentist. He moved to Edgewood. Somebody moved into his house and wasn't taking care of the property. And a couple of the makers just like went over to him and talked to him and said, hey, you know, this is Churchill, we take care of our, we take care of our properties. And you just do, you didn't need a police, you just, just like neighborly conversation. And maybe that, to me, is at least rare. And, uh, 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 maybe that to me is at least rare. I don't know that everybody does that, you know? That's how I see Churchill.
Yeah.
Anyhow.
Okay. It's not easy.
So what do we need to do next?
Well, either, we need to either make a recommendation or not a recommendation to council. Um, and again, it's just a recommendation. It's not whether, you know, council will, uh, they do not have to follow our recommendation. Um, however, you know, I. Doing nothing is, is, um, in my view foolish because. Uh, then that just gives them free rein to do what they, wh- whomever they want. Um. You know, I, I don't know what the recommendation would be, um, within the confines of being able. To go any further on what we're trying to do through this ordinance, through registration, record keeping, inspection, permitting. Uh, you know, if, if you don't like the regulation, then you're looking at an outright ban. And, uh, right now, an outright ban is an invitation for litigation.
And I don't see this inviting more of this activity. Uh, you know, it may get some, um. Some notice, uh, when it's passed, but I can't see a rush of short term rentals coming in. And then after that, um, you know, everyone's going to forget about it except a handful who may be interested in it. So I, I, I do agree, that's one of the considerations is will this invite this type of activity? And I'm thinking that my feeling is that it's not going to invite this type of activity to any, any noticeable level. Um, with that in mind, I, I do, um, I make a motion, we recommend. To council that they pass this ordinance.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it, but I just maybe feel with an amendment that the, uh, county, uh, comments are addressed. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yes, I'll, I'll revise my motion, um. That we recommend to council that they pass this ordinance, uh, taking into consideration and addressing the county's comments.
Okay, and Mike, do you second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All not in favor? Okay, so it's unanimous. Okay, well, and Diane, thank you very much. And, uh, our solicitor, thank you for all the work you put into it. I, it's not an easy thing to do, I know.
Well, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm grateful to be dealing with a, a panel of, of planning commissioners. That are as astute and prepared and reasonable as all of you are. So I'm grateful.
You too. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that is all that's on the agenda this evening. Did we lose Alex already?
No, that's, that's correct. That's all. Uh, we do, we have advertisers meeting next month. But as of now, we really have nothing to have on the agenda for an April meeting. If there will be an April meeting, we'll do what we did this month, which is use Savvy Citizen to host the agenda. Um, there's, but there's nothing on my plate that I would have before you. What you would want to stay tuned for is next week on Monday and then the following week on March thirteenth. Uh, council will discuss scheduling public hearings or delaying action. Or, you know, going back to the drawing board based on, you know, comment, feedback, you know, that we received. So stay tuned for that because obviously you guys will become vested in this and will be interested in that next step.
And then for the future, for the, uh, attendees, Alex. Uh, apparently they got the agenda, but people did not know to click through to get to the actual draft resolutions. But they are posted on our website, right?
Correct. We, we have a segment of Savvy, or I'm sorry, VCO three sixty of our website where we. Kind of a repository for documents, including meetings and agendas and budgets where we have proposed legislation. In fact, I think a, a version of our draft law ordinance is up there. Don't tell Gavin that because he's sometimes concerned that I post earlier versions of ordinances. And sometimes that can be problematic because what's the current version that, that's before council? I'll make sure that as we move forward, I have the latest version for the public to look at. Um, you know, so that they can do that. And then people want to, they can come to the borough office and look at a printed copy. Which is the step we always take before advertising and adopting of ordinance. It's always available for public inspection for people when they come to the borough office and view it themselves.
Good.
Okay. All right, with that in mind, I, I join, join the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you all.